Call the Tuesday morning study session to order, please. Could you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Leitner.
Here.
Commissioner Walls.
Here.
Commissioner Rice.
Here.
Commissioner Duckham. Commissioner Tompkins. Commissioner Mahoney.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Elwell. Chairman Chetwell.
Here. First opportunity for public comment.
Peter Bormuth. I wanted to say that the other day, the American Pediatrics Association, it was actually middle of the summer, issued a paper saying that plastics and food dyes are potentially harmful to your children. The plastics leach molecules that cause cancer. The food dyes haven't been fully tested and some of them are also carcinogenic. So, we're talking about a federal agency, the FDA, that isn't doing their job. And that's what the American Pediatrics Association said. Meanwhile, the Trump administration is removing science boards from these agencies, from the EPA, from the FDA, to facilitate industry to allow them to make more money off the backs of our people and our children. I just want to say that this is wrong. And it's been going on a long time, and we need to change it. So, I'm going to encourage everyone out there to vote Democratic in this election and to remove some of these people who are deliberately harming our children to make money. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good morning. Tony Baer. I love Donald Trump. Love what he's done for this country. He has made so much progress, made life in this country so much better. I'm going to encourage everybody to stand behind our wonderful President Trump and vote straight Republican. Secondly, on your agenda today is a construction administration services for Smith Group to provide phase one for the fairgrounds renovation. There's a separate event center project underway. Smith Group's going to be doing a site drainage. If there's not really tight coordination between these two projects, you have the potential for the drainage plan that Smith Group is, may be preparing, to be negatively impacted by the final grades, final drainage for the event center project. Smith Group would have to design based on the existing grades or the event center would have to make a firm commitment as to what grades they are going to design to. So, this is just an area of potential conflict that just needs to be looked at and reviewed to make sure when these two projects are done, they are harmonious. Thank you.
Good morning. John Wilson. 1045 South Durant Street, Jackson, Michigan. According to the packet regarding the fairgrounds, the Jackson County Department of Transportation will be in charge of all, everything within the fairgrounds, including tearing up the asphalt and laying new asphalt. And according to the Jackson County Parks meeting minutes from last month, this will be done by winter. So, we're going to have our Jackson County Department of Transportation personnel and according to the packet also regarding the fairgrounds, the new equipment being used within the fairgrounds to tear up the asphalt until laying new asphalt down. I understand it has to be done and somebody has to do it. But was it ever considered to maybe contract this out so our Jackson County Department of Transportation can spend their time before winter on our Jackson County roads and streets? And also regarding the, how it's going to be paid for, the asphalt removal and to lay new asphalt down. It states that the bond money will pay for it. Would that be for the, would that be the fairground bond money or the Jackson County Department of Transportation bond money? Thank you.
Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. Entertained a motion for the approval of the minutes of the September 4th, 2018. Have a motion in support. Any questions? Comments saying none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Annual report of the Drain Commissioner. Jeffrey Schneider.
Good morning. I asked Elaine to put me on the agenda. She apparently forgot. But we have presented to you on your email the Drain Commissioner's report for 2017. Are there any questions on the report itself? None? Last year, Dave asked me to go into some highlights in anticipation of a repeat question. I'll give you some. 2017 was one of the busier years for rain-related activities. On August 16th, 2016, there was a record rainfall event measured at the airport, 5.53 inches in 18 hours. Better than the 100-year storm in Springport, recorded 6.5 inches in the same event. That water never really ran away entirely. It was captured in the frost. And we continued in 2017 with a very wet spring. It continued through May and just into June. On July 12th, we got a two-inch rain. Again, on October 14th, we received 3.2 inches rainfall over a 24-hour period of time. Given the wet conditions, wet feet, wet basements, my office responded to 141 non-county drain requests for services. Each one of those requests were, responded to with a personal visit and proposed solution for each of those requests for service. 2017 brought the Ganga Lakes intercounty drain, which is, Ganga Lakes is a part of the Rice Creek, which flows into the Kalamazoo River. It's a project that was called for by resolution of the Calhoun County Board of Commissioners, where they wanted to change out some road crossings. Didn't want to meet the MDAQ standards, so they asked the Drain Commissioner's office to do it under the protocol, yes, it was an intercounty drain. Calhoun County Drain Commissioner went forward with that project pursuant to their resolution. Given the Emerald Ash bores and the downing of a bunch of ash trees, there's also some timber in the drain downstream of Prairie Lake. It's a big project. It's one that I knew was going to get out of hand, but interceded, convinced the intercounty drainage board, made up of Calhoun County, Jackson County, and the Department of Agriculture to separate the wady debris project from that of the road crossings. Went through the public hearing of practicability and separated the projects at my insistence. The ash was pulled by hand as opposed to a piece of equipment, an excavator, come along. Jackson County's share of that project will be about $7,000, which is pretty small given the scope of the rest of the project. To date, the engineering alone for the culvert project's $89,000. They're looking in Calhoun County to save $1.2 million by going with culverts rather than bridges as would have been the requirement of MDOT and MDAQ. Hearing for necessity for that project's coming up in November. 2017 also brought my site plan review for Lidle Bend Piggery, to the extent that I did not believe that the DEQ's issuance of a CNMP and MPDS permit was going to be sufficient to predict the potential dangers, monitor those dangers, and then react if something came about. A petition was filed in December for a contested case that's still ongoing. And finally, the Evergreen River Water Trail Development Plan was approved by the state in 2017. It also preceded the state's water trail plan. It's a plan that tees up funding for water trails as the state has previously provided for terrestrial trails. It puts Jackson County in a pretty good spot for a trust fund grant. The project's going to be handed off to the Parks Commission. Parks Commission's going to go forward with the grant applications this year with an expectation of receiving the funds next year. Was the highlights, any questions on any of them or anything else? Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to thank the Drain Commissioner for a detailed report. 66 pages. I didn't get through all of it, but most of it.
I did. I was looking for stuff on the Cascades. Does that fall under your purview? Because I know there's been water creepage issues on the eastern boundary of the Cascades.
It will ultimately. The lagoons pass through a stream that runs through the golf course and passes into the county drain, Kibbe Drain, ultimately into the McCain Drain and Sandstone Creek and Grand River. So, there'll be some coordination through my office, yes. But the problems on the east end of the park are a result of, over the years, Parks Commission used to regulate those lagoons with a dam at the lower end of the water course down by their maintenance garage. Over the years, they decided crossings in the golf course were appropriate and necessary and threw the culverts in in the stream that had become silleded. So, it actually raised the elevation of the flow line of the drain. And over the years, those lagoons became wetter and wetter. The wetlands expanded. And that's hopefully something that'll be addressed when we get to cleaning the lagoons. Other questions? Thank you.
Jerry, I guess.
I was going to say Jerry. Next up, we have a resolution in opposition to recreational marijuana. And I believe the prosecutor has a presentation or some remarks.
Good morning. I'm here today to ask the Board of Commissioners to support a resolution opposing the bail proposal 18 hyphen 1, which would legalize recreational marijuana in the state of Michigan. And I don't know if all of you drafted a resolution, if you have a copy of that or have seen that. Okay. It also brought some visuals. This one's a map of the United States. Basically shows that out of the 50 states, 41 states do not legalize recreational marijuana in the District of Columbia. So, 41 states say it's illegal to have recreational marijuana. And this other graphic basically shows the bail proposal 18 hyphen 1, if passed, would allow up to 10 ounces that a person could legally possess, two and a half outside in public, but 10 ounces total. And if you look at the states that have legalized recreational marijuana in the United States, you know, this would be the largest or greatest amount of any state. And compared to Colorado, which only has one ounce, you know, we'd be 10 times that number. And Colorado's had a number of issues with their legalization of marijuana by their citizens. And that's contained in the resolution. Basically, I would just say there, if you boil it down, it's bad for the community. It's bad for youth. The stats are that it increases the use of marijuana among teens, increases expulsions and suspensions at schools. It's bad for public safety in that it's an increase in crime in Colorado. They've seen an increase or spike in drunk driving because of drug driving. Also, it hasn't eliminated the black market in Colorado for marijuana because of the taxation. Forgot to mention here on this graphic, the proposal actually limits the tax at 10%. That would be the lowest tax on recreational marijuana in any of the nine states that have it in the United States. So, there's still, you still have a black market because people don't want to pay any tax at all. And so, that's what they found in Colorado. They've had a major, major problem with black market activity. And in addition to that, you know, our workforce. I think the resolution, you know, it's going to create issues as far as having a healthy and drug-free employee base for employers. And that's going to cause all kinds of problems and probably litigation as well for companies. So, that's also not good from that standpoint. The Prosecutor's Association of Michigan, the Michigan Sheriff's Association, and the Michigan Association of Police Chiefs have all come out against this bail proposal. I'm personally against it as the prosecutor-in-trial for Jackson County. Other arguments that you may hear here in the month of October are, number one, that if we pass this, then it'll free up police resources to enforce other laws. And that's one of my pet peeves against that argument because as the prosecutor-in-trial for Jackson County, I'm the chief law enforcement officer and cases come across my desk every week. And I can tell you, at least in my county, my officers, you know, we are not going out and going after people with marijuana. People get charged with marijuana possessions because there's a traffic stop and we have to, the police officer has to notice that, has to charge that. Or if someone's growing marijuana in, let's say, a house in the city, the neighbors complain because the smell is so strong, so pungent. They complain to the police and they come, you know, and have to investigate that. So, we're not doing that. That's a false argument. So, if you hear that argument, I think, number one, either that person's ignorant. They don't know what's going on with police resources. We don't have enough police officers as it is. Or two, they know that's false, but they're saying it anyways. Either way, that's a really, really a bad argument. The other thing is that can really bugs me is that you hear that, well, you know, if we legalize marijuana, it's not a bad thing. You know, it's safe, it's harmless. And I would just invite anyone to just do a Google search for problems with marijuana in Colorado. And you can see there's ample number of cases where there's certainly been an increase in the emergency room visits in the state of Colorado, especially with kids. You know, with the food products infused with marijuana. That's been a major problem for them. And two, they've actually had some tragic deaths where someone has consumed a food product with marijuana and they've had an adverse reaction. There was a husband and wife where the husband, I think, took some candy bar or snack bar and had a reaction. The wife was trying to call 911. He took a gun and shot and killed her, his wife. And also a teenager on spring break ate too much of a marijuana cookie. You're only supposed to eat like a bite of one. And he had a psychotic reaction and jumped off the balcony of his hotel to his death. So, you know, the fact that many people say it's safe and harmless. Well, if it's safe and harmless, there should be no problems whatsoever. And if you just do a brief search, you can see that's not correct. So, there's a lot that can be said. There's lots of data that just isn't good for the community. And I think what's driving this is just, it's the feeling that there's a lot of money to be made in this from companies. And I think the companies who would be involved with us, they'll make a lot of money. But I think the government, the state's not going to make the money. It's not, it's going to be less than 1% of the state budget, whatever you can take in. But there's going to be social costs involved, as they've seen in Colorado. You know, people are unemployed or homelessness, workplace absences, problems with schools. All of those things cost money and resources. And so, that's something you have to think about and take into consideration as well. So, with that, I would just open up to any questions you might have about the proposed resolution.
Jerry, really just thank you for bringing this. I agree with everything you've said. I'm strongly opposed to this. You and I have talked about it off and on. I think most local police chiefs are likewise opposed to recreational marijuana. And you've hit on all the high points. I think one additional one is the THC content in marijuana nowadays versus what it used to be. I think it's estimated to be 30 times more powerful than it was in days gone by. Don't want to coin the phrase, "It's not your parents' marijuana," but it's not. It's something so much stronger. And just for the youth, the employment, it's a gateway drug. And I've got grandchildren. I can't fathom not knowing if this passes. If the people that your grandchildren around are users of marijuana, how could you ever trust that? So, there's no amount of tax dollars in my mind that would make it appropriate for us to adopt. So, I'll be strongly supporting the motion, resolution.
Thank you. Any other questions?
John?
Jerry, one of the things that I think that is important to recognize, because I have this question. I mean, I ask my students. This is one of kind of our typical questions that we talk about, the role of government and talk about moving forward. Of course, this is now a proposal. And medical marijuana, because oftentimes the students will talk about the medical benefits, quote unquote, "medical benefits." That's not going to go away. That's, this is actually moving it to recreational use. And to some degree, the conversation, at least in my classes, does turn to this idea of taking what we argue is a medicine or has medical effects and benefits and making it recreational. We don't, we don't do that really for other medicines. And so, the idea that there's no impact on the body, that it's all beneficial, which a number of my students unfortunately believe to be 100% correct, it's not there. So, I think there's an education issue that needs to go on. I'm also supportive of the resolution. I'll be supportive of this resolution in voting no for a number of reasons. But the one concern that I do have is, and it is the concern that, that we do see that marijuana can be, not, I don't want to call it in terms of, kind of a, it opens the door to investigation, which, which can have a negative impact upon a community, particularly within the city. And I appreciate your, your point that that's something that we don't do in this county and that your officers, our officers, don't do that. But it is something that does concern me in terms of the criminalization of a recreational activity at, at a home, where somebody could argue that this is, you know, personal and their, their home, their property, their castle, kind of a thing. And so, I'd like to at least get to that point someplace where we're thinking in terms of a decriminalization, fine-based, secondary to all other investigations. I know that that's not what this proposal does per se, that I won't be supporting. But in terms of the proposition, I'll be supporting this resolution. But in the future, as a leader, I'm hopeful that that's something that you can take, I guess, at least the stance that we have in this county and advocate for that throughout the state because that is an issue that, that does warrant investigation.
Commissioner Williams, thank you. I would just like to add on to that. You know, I'm also on the Corrections Committee for the Prosecutor's Association of Michigan, and so, I know the numbers. And in Michigan, you know, the most recent stats released from the Michigan Department of Corrections of 2016, you know, there's just over 40,000 inmates in the system. But 73% are in there for violent crimes. And less than 8% are in for felony drug offenses. And oh, that's, so that's about roughly about 3,000 people in prison for felony drug offenses in Michigan. And of those 3,000 people, only six are in for any kind of marijuana-related. You know, marijuana is a misdemeanor. Usually, if you have some type of delivery of marijuana, it's very difficult to go to prison in Michigan on a first-time offense. You have to have a prior record. So, when I hear people say, "Well, gosh, we passed this proposal. We're going to reduce the number of people in our prison system for marijuana." Again, that is false. I mean, the facts don't, don't support that argument. Thank you very much. Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jerry, I also thank you for bringing this forward. You and I have also had many talks on this. And obviously, I've been to your drug summits. And marijuana's been brought up constantly every year. And whether it's law enforcement or somebody from the medical healthcare system or what have you, everyone across the board agrees that it's not a good idea, especially as you mentioned, with the THC levels being uncertain and everything else. You know, we, the only township has, even though they have some stacking, they have 73 marijuana facilities, growing labs, et cetera. They're building them across from each other. It's gotten out of hand. They got 28 more waiting. And this is the medical marijuana part of it. I just had a guy last night talk to me and said that he didn't need the medical marijuana card, but he got one because he wanted to go get his marijuana. So, it's already being abused as well, too. He said he went and got his marijuana. He says, "I couldn't, he says, "I can't smoke it." He says, "It just, it just blew me away." He says, "It's nothing like I'm used to." He said, "It was so strong." He says, "I can't, I just can't do it." So, he's going to go back and just get it illegally. So, you know, again, to me, all this would be, this is another opportunity, as you mentioned, the black market, to create more social problems. And again, for whatever reason, people just aren't able to control themselves and they'll just end up being a problem for, for all of us. So, again, I appreciate you being here.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Anything else?
Mr. Chair, I'd still move the motion unless...
I believe Mr. Mahoney would like to speak.
How you doing, Jerry?
Good morning.
Um, I've got quite a few concerns with this resolution. I will not be supporting it. The first question that I would have is, do we have a resolution on any of the opiates?
Not that I know of.
Okay. So, I asked that question. And of course, opiates that most people are dying from are illegal. But I'm curious as to why we're so quick to put a resolution out against something that the state of Michigan citizens are going to be allowed to vote on? And we've not taken the same precaution or the same measure against the biggest drug problem that we have in Michigan? That's kind of confusing to me.
Well, I would, if the commission wants to adopt a resolution against opiate abuse, I certainly would be in support of that.
Okay. Yeah, I just was curious because this has been brought before us now. And opiate issue has been killing people, several people in the city of Jackson and the county of Jackson. And we've not made the decision to, to make a resolution against any opiates.
Well, it's an excellent point. But I would say that, you know, I've been heavily involved in, you know, the work against opioids and heroin in our county. You know, started the task force. We're planning to set for Drug Summit V on November 30th at Jackson College again. I've met a lot of people who are addicted to opioids. I've met a lot of family members who've lost loved ones because of overdose deaths. And I heard a lot of stories from people who... And I've heard a lot of stories from people who became addicted. And one of the things, the things that's a common denominator is that they started out with marijuana as a teenager. And I know you hear studies that it's not a gateway drug, but, you know, my personal opinion based, I'm on the field, battlefield, fighting this fight, and that's what I've seen. And over and over again, that's a story I've heard. So, I think that certainly goes to the opioid issue, but it goes to the nature of this particular drug, making it a recreational thing that's going to be legal. I think it's just really overall very bad in a lot of different aspects.
Um, thank you. I would slightly disagree with that. I don't, I don't know. I think that some consideration has to be taken into the individuals who go to opiates after they've been prescribed an opiate to take as well. Because it seems like this can, I'm hearing conflicting information on that. Sometimes I hear that it's, people go to opiates after smoking marijuana, and more recent, I've heard more people saying that they took some grandma's or grandpa's pills out the cabinet or something like that. And that's also a huge issue, and I've heard that more often, than individuals smoking marijuana and then leading to worse drugs. I also think that some of the information is kind of skewed as far as deaths from marijuana. Someone being high and shooting their wife, I don't think I'd consider that death by marijuana. I think that I'd consider that death by a gun. Same thing with suicide. I'd consider that death by suicide, not death by marijuana. I think that's conflicting information. It can be blamed on the drug itself. Overall, I just feel like commissioners, that this is not, this is not a fair assessment. I think, I think that I would definitely like to hear a professional from the opposite view. Everywhere that I've gone to, that I've heard professionals come and speak, it's always been against, and it's definitely always come from someone in law enforcement, which I can definitely understand. But I do think that there's, there's a conversation to be had about the loss of revenue that the law enforcement departments will see if marijuana is decriminalized. Is that something that you've looked at yet, Jerry? Are you, have you looked at if marijuana is legalized, how much revenue your department and the different law enforcement departments would be at risk of losing at that point?
I can't really answer that question, other than to say that the argument that, you know, law enforcement uses a lot of resources on marijuana, that's false. I have not seen that here in my county, and I see those cases every week. It just doesn't happen. We don't have enough officers as it is to enforce the current violations of law we have now. I mean, we have homicide cases, home invasion cases, sexual assault cases, child abuse cases, armed robbery cases. You know, police resources go to that first and foremost. But we're not, we're not going out, you know, going after people with marijuana.
I mean, I definitely understand that. I don't think that it's a situation where people are going out and looking for individuals, "Oh, let's go catch these guys who have marijuana." But I do think that there's a huge difference in that marijuana, to me, is the low-hanging fruit. You know, you can't smell opiates in a car. You can't smell if somebody has crack cocaine in the car. You can't smell if someone has heroin in the car. If someone has even the smallest amount of marijuana on them, that may be thrown out. If an officer pulls them over, that's the first thing they're going to want to talk to him about, which eventually and always leads to something else. So I think that those numbers are probably also skewed, because if someone gets caught and they have marijuana, that can, that can more than likely be thrown out. And isn't marijuana decriminalized in the city of Jackson? Is that true or is that not true? Am I mistaken?
It is true in the city.
So I think a lot of those instances in the city, that case would be thrown out because it's legal in the city, but it would probably lead to more legal issues for that individual based off it starting with them having marijuana.
Well, technically speaking, it wouldn't affect a state law case, which the prosecutor enforces state law. So even though the city has passed an ordinance, if my office has a case against someone and it's a state law violation with marijuana, state law is going to trump local law. So, that's not going to apply. But Commissioner, you raise valid points, but, you know, one of the arguments is, well, you know, if you legalize marijuana, it's going to help with your opioid problem. And the stats in Colorado just don't show that. I mean, it hasn't impacted the opioid issue in the state of Colorado. So, I don't think that's going to be any different here in the state of Michigan. And just this morning, I got an email that looks like the Michigan State Medical Society, which represents 15,000 doctors in Michigan, has come out against the proposal. And so, I, I'm not a medical professional, I'm not, but certainly, doctors are coming out against this, well, medical doctors, that says something, too.
Again, I would, I'd definitely be opposed to this resolution, and I would ask that we as commissioners take some more time, one, to hear opinion from the opposite side of the spectrum. I feel like that that's only fair that we hear what the benefits are from a professional standpoint, because I'm hearing that, you know, more than 300 economists have previously reported that legalizing pot could save the US up to $14 billion a year. There's also benefits in the increase of jobs that would happen from recreational use of marijuana in the industry itself, because it is an industry itself. So I think that I would definitely encourage us to, at least before making a decision, I'm not trying to sway anybody's point, because I'm not a professional. But I definitely think that hearing the opinion of passing this resolution from one side is a little misleading and a little blinding, when all you're hearing is one side of the spectrum's perspective. I think that we should take some time and investigate this and invite someone from the opposite perspective to give us some information on the possibilities and some of the benefits that could exist if we decide to leave this alone. I would further say that I would prefer to leave this situation in the hands of the Michigan voters, and if the Michigan voters decide to pass it and legalize it, then so be it. The citizens of the state of Michigan have spoken, and I think it's a little out of turn of us to make a move so quickly before we listen to what the citizens of this state want to do. And that would be my opinion on this.
Dr. Tompkins?
First, I would apologize for being late. I really wanted to talk about this issue after reading it last night and so on. I am a medical professional, so you're going to hear it from my side, okay? Marijuana, it can cause hallucinogenic states in a person, and they do things that they don't remember and they don't want to do, okay? Depends upon the person. And the other thing is that, you know, I had a cardiac cath on Thursday, had a stent placed, okay? And I'm sitting there looking up at the guy who came from Ann Arbor to do it, okay? And I'm wondering, geez, did he smoke last night? Okay? Because the stuff stays in your system for 30 days, okay? Did he smoke last night? Okay? That's going to be a question that you got to ask in regards to all big things, okay? Whether it's a heart operation, or a total hip, or a total knee, or anything else. You're not going to know if your guy who's operating on you is 100% on his toes that day, if he was smoking, okay, five days before, six days before, or whatever. Right? And there's no way of testing that, because it stays in the system for 30 days. And it's, when you say it doesn't lead, I think, the thing I read last night was the, was 110% in Colorado-
114%.
114% in Colorado, that increased. I think it's bad for you, okay? I don't think that you should do it. And if you're going to do that, why don't you just lower the drinking age to 14, okay? And so, because you're going to have the same bad side effects on the young people. And I'm done, thank you.
Any other commissioners?
Yeah?
I'm sorry, just to make one more comment. Doc, and I appreciate your medical opinion on the situation, for sure. I definitely had those same concerns, but I would probably be more concerned if I knew that the individual had taken opiates, which to me, I think, speaks volumes to exactly what my point just was. Marijuana would stay in your system for 30 days. An opiate, if I smoke crack, if I pop a pill, if I snort something, it's in my system for three to five days. I'd be more concerned about somebody operating on me or doing something to me under the influence of an opiate than I would under the influence of marijuana. And then, nobody's asking to lower the age to 14 years old. If you're looking at it from the aspect of drinking alcohol, it'd be the exact same. You'd have to be 21 to partake. So I think that that's still, that's still two different situations, but I will, I will save the rest of my comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of comments. I'll say that I'm on the front lines with Jerry and have got, as I've said it before, 38 years in law enforcement, dealing with marijuana and other drugs. And I see this as obviously a societal issue with impact on society if it's passed, and the suggestion that we just wait and see what the voters do. We're leaders. People look to us for our opinion on issues. I don't have any problem giving my opinion and supporting this resolution, Jerry's in opposition to it. We talk about, why aren't we doing something as far as a resolution with opioids? If there was a ballot proposal to legalize that, I'll guarantee you Jerry would be here with a resolution to oppose it, and I'd be making the motion to support it. So I just see too many negative things with this. I've listened to other people for 38 years about drugs, and I know what my opinion is on it, and I see no good coming from this, if it is legalized. And I want the public that I represent to know that I'm opposed to this as they go to the polls. I don't want to wait until afterwards to see what the outcome is. So I would thereby move Jerry's resolution.
So I have a motion to move the resolution opposing the legalization of non-medical marijuana and recreational marijuana. Doctor, are you seconding?
Yeah.
Doctor, are you seconding?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, please, now you may comment.
The, if you have somebody who's taken opioids, okay, you usually can tell that they're taking the opioids and they're acting differently.
Doctor, I apologize, but you have to speak to the motion, and I realize you believe you are, but directly to whether or not we vote on the motion at this time. I apologize. So what I'm asking for is the clerk to please post the vote. Thank you, doctor.
I do have a question, too.
Yes, sir.
If this is passed, and medical marijuana is passed, what does that mean for the county of Jackson at that point?
This is a resolution showing which way the Board of Commissioners, a majority of them stand. It doesn't change any state statute if it was to pass. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Michael?
Next up, I believe we have Christopher and Rusty are going to address the next couple of issues. I may even chime in myself.
With your blessing, I'll address kind of both together with some introductory comments. Is that okay? They're both tied?
Sure, we'll try.
Both the electrical work that's proposed here and as well as the design work have several common characteristics, so I'll just give a quick summary. I know you have the detailed staff reports in front of you. Historically, the fairgrounds has been hobcobbled together, and Rusty can speak to that. He's dug in and learned a lot about the fairgrounds through this project so far. So we're trying to do things right, as we do here at the county now, and basically, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to do so, we think. So, it seems like at every turn, we have a can of worms, something new that comes up. There's some highly technical issues. There's a spaghetti of electrical components that have been put together. So as we even just get into the demolition to prepare for the upgrades to the property, we're finding a lot of problems. We're also seeing a heavy restriction in the availability of contractors in these two areas of work, and we have a very comprehensive scope that's detailed and listed for each one in the respective staff reports. So, these two firms are experts in the fields of work that we need here. They have knowledge that's specific to our site. Aladdin's worked on this fairgrounds property for 40 years, and we have some of their senior people involved in this personaling. Same thing with Smith Group, which used to be JJR, and they helped with the master planning of the fairgrounds. So there are a lot of technical details to work out, timelines are tight, and there are myriad regulatory requirements through the city and the DEQ that need to be addressed sooner rather than later. We've been coordinating closely with the Planning Commission at the city. There's a lot of stormwater issues and requirements, lighting issues and requirements, fencing, zoning issues, so we're trying to get all those details sorted out and incorporated into the plans as we move forward. So, even just the track removal is not quite as simple as it might appear, because of the existing electrical lines and utilities that we're running into. And so, we're also trying to coordinate with the ongoing use of the fairgrounds with various events through the winter months and into next year. So, there's a lot of very detailed issues, and we've got a dedicated team, we're meeting regularly on this, and we want to keep it moving forward. I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add, Rusty? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Howell, I'm sorry.
That's okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, or for Mike Really, my only question, and I had written this down before the one public comment, was about the expenses related to any work that JC dot is doing there. And I, as I read through the information for the PAC, it appears JC dot is doing a lot of coordination work there. And I'm assuming that that'll all be fully reimbursed to JC dot, knowing that they function on Act 51 dollars. So just an assurance that, I know what the answer is, but I wanted the public to know.
Yeah, we're not spending Act 51 dollars on the fairgrounds project.
I just wanted that clear up front. Thank you.
That is correct, and you do receive a reduced billable rate because of that. We're not nearly as expensive as Smith Group, but they have areas of expertise that we need. So we're doing what we can to, in-house, to help keep the costs down.
I appreciate that and agree with that. I just wanted to make it clear for the public. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Thank you for bringing that up.
And I would just add, you know, Christopher alluded to the myriad of obstacles down at the fairgrounds. And in defense of the fairgrounds, it's almost 200 years old. There's a lot of things that have happened on those fairgrounds over the last literally 200 years. I mean, the grandstands alone is, that structure is like 96 or 7 years old. So, you know, as they're going through there, and as much as Aladdin has worked on it over the last 40 or so years, they've never actually taken a whole comprehensive approach. It's generally been called in to fix this or that, a transformer blows, you know, in the middle of a fair or event or something. So, this, as Christopher alluded to, is really is once in a hundred years, if you will. We expect the improvements we're making to be here 100 years from now, frankly. So.
A lot of the obstacles we're battling are because of those, sorry. Apologize for my attire. I dressed to be in the field today, not here. So, a lot of those issues that we're experiencing now are because of those calls that came in for, hey, we need power over here, we need power over there for this event or that event. So they would just go in and tie on somewhere and get the power there immediately, because it was always an emergency. So now we're trying to, Aladdin is familiar with a lot of those requirements and, or the work that was done, and that's why we're encouraging them to be involved here, because they know how to track all that back without putting the entire fairgrounds out of power and still make the adjustments as needed.
Yeah, I've been impressed, I know some of Aladdin's senior people who have retired are coming out of retirement to help with this project. One, because frankly, they have that commitment to the fairgrounds, they've worked on it, their kids played on it, grew up here, and they're literally saying, hey, I remember when, and are working with us closely. A lot of people involved, a lot of moving parts. I know they meet every Thursday, I believe, and it could be anywhere from 15 to 30 people in a room, because when you bring all the engineers and architects and the city's people and our people and road, there's a lot of people. But it is very much being coordinated closely.
Sarah?
I just want to add to that. When we were in the-
When we were in the process of the master plan, we actually had, and you guys know this, we had the electricians who were in retirement come out, because they're the only ones that could track and map the system, because the fairgrounds wasn't mapped at all. And Rusty knows this. And as far as all of the utilities, not just power. And during Fair Week itself, we, this year, had the gentleman out of retirement for Fair Week just to keep that going, because it is complicated and complex. And when he said it was cobbled together, I laughed, because that's the understatement of the year. But it does, it works, but it needed these upgrades, and I'm glad that we're finally moving forward and, you know, getting these pieces together. I commend you guys for doing it, because I'm simple. I'm not an electrician, but just looking at it makes me crazy and having to deal with it. So I can't imagine dealing with that mess, because that's what it is. So, keep truckin'.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add one thing. I think we all want this to be a premier facility for the Jackson community, but also statewide. And so we did test the waters with Smith Group when we brought them in. We're speaking of Aladdin, and I agree with everything that's been said. We talked with them, and we felt comfortable moving forward. Both Smith Group as well, one of their senior partners has been personally involved in this, Pat Doher, who has a history in working with the Fair Board and the original master plan. So similarly, he's very busy in Detroit and countrywide and so forth as a higher person in the firm, but he's personally involved in this. And frankly, he's brought in some of his best talent with landscape architects to help create the community space and a coherent, congruent design that fits and meshes. They actually called into question some of our early assumptions based on placement of the event center. I think it wound up getting moved a few feet to make it better fit. So there's been a lot of good advice and expertise already offered. So those are just small, I think, five to ten thousand dollar pieces that we got them involved on the early end, and we felt like, wow, what a difference this is making. So that's where we ask for the larger proposals to just carry forward.
Commissioner Howell?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move the motion to authorize use of Aladdin electrical at a cost not to exceed $150,000.
Have a motion and support? The vote should be in front of you. Chris?
Mr. Chairman, I'd also move to authorize use of Design and Construction Administration Services from Smith Group for Phase One at a cost not to exceed $165,000.
You have a motion and support? Any questions?
Thank you, Commissioners.
You.
Next up, we have a budget presentation. As Jim's walking up, I would tell you that I met with five folks yesterday who seek Jim's position. You know, this is last month. He's retiring end of October, and therefore this is his last budget, which he's been fully responsible for. He's at a bang-up job, and I think you'll be very pleased with this presentation. I thought it was very professionally put together, and it tells the story. And of course, the whole budget, meaning all the numbers, are on the website for anyone to go and look at and spend as much time as you'd like. This here is the summary, the culmination, if you will, of that. Jim?
Mike, do you want questions as we go or at the end? Or Jim?
Yes, whatever you prefer, Commissioner. Yes, we're presenting the 2019 and 2020 budget, and at the regular commission meeting later this month, we'll ask your approval of the 2019 budget. We're presenting the 2020 as a draft for information only. We do not adopt that at this point. So again, we've started the process of looking at two years at once, and we also have, we look at a five-year projection overall to see what the trends are at the county. And we always keep in mind the board's priorities and strategic plans that the board has developed over the years. If we look at the history of the general fund budget, we can see that there are some gradual increases over the years, but yet, when we look at 2017 versus 2018, there is a reduction. And the reason for that is that we set up a separate fund for emergency dispatch in 2018. So there's $2.2 million that would have been in the general fund is now separately stated in a separate fund, the 9/11 Service Fund. If we look at the differences, the rate of increase, again, adjusting for the fact that the emergency dispatch is not included, the increase from eighteen to nineteen is only one and a half percent and so forth. Again, if we look at our revenue sources, the major revenue source, again, is always taxes, and when I almost said property taxes, but taxes include real and personal property tax, transfer tax, and also the state segregates. If you recall, legislation reduces personal property tax levies on our manufacturers, but then the state, under their law, reimburses us for the majority of that revenue loss. And so that is also included in this total, which comprises 53% of our total revenue. The next largest source is intergovernmental, which is a generic term, which principally means federal and state grants. It's mostly state grants that cover the cost of the court system and some other activities. It also includes our revenue sharing payments of three and a half million dollars and so If we look on the expenditure side, where the money goes, personnel services comprise 57% of our total general fund budget. That's salary and fringe benefits. And the other categories, contractual, supplies, materials, and transfers out. Transfers out is where we record those monies that go to other funds within the county. And the majority here, there's a transfer to the childcare fund. There's a debt service transfer for our pension bonds, and also a transfer to cover retiree health care that's included in the totals. Another way to look at the expenditures and a different graph is to see the trends or the composition, and we can see that, again, the totals are fairly steady. There's a difference in personnel services are reduced in 2018 slightly, and the reason for that is we are showing what used to be defined benefit cost under salary and fringes is now included as a transfer, because we're recording that as a transfer of debt service If we look at our expenditures yet another way, if we look at it by groups, and these are functional groups, we see that the majority, the largest area is public safety, followed by judicial, general government, and so forth. What follows is a detail of what comprises those particular groups. Again, and I should have said that our total general fund budget, I didn't really address the total number there, that's $46,306,204 for 2019. So if we look at what comprises the various groups, public safety comprised of the various operations, now known as the sheriff, but also the emergency dispatch and so forth, and also the animal shelter that's included here. If we look at general government, which is sort of a catch-all category, that's everything else that doesn't fit, but it's mainly administrative-type items. That comprises 18% of the total general fund budget. The judicial section, in which is the court system and the prosecuting attorney, that comprises 21% of the total general fund budget. And then legislative, that would be this body, is less than 1% of the total cost in the general fund. Social services, in that category, we have the various programs of the Department on Aging, as well as Veterans Affairs. And then anything else that really cannot be classified as a particular group or other categories that are really general in nature and benefit the county as a whole would be on this category, which includes non-departmental expenses, which includes insurance, property liability insurance of the county, and other expenses, again, that are not attributable to any one department. Also includes retiree benefits. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Jim, back on ten, you've got public safety 28%, and you have emergency dispatch there, but I thought we broke that out differently as a separate budget, so would it still be included there or not?
Well, I would say it is. Now, that's not to say, when I say public services, I'm using a generic term, which doesn't necessarily mean the sheriff.
It's added to the budget, okay.
And so forth. So it's a functional definition, so it's really related to public services.
And Mike's jumping at the bit to answer.
Well, yes, exactly. They are their own separate fund, separate budget and all that. But yet, it's public safety as a function, is what he's saying there. But they are their own separate funding source and as well as budget.
Thank you.
Is the jail included there?
What follows is a very busy slide, but it includes all of, well, the following two slides include all of the general fund departments with the revenue and expenditures side by side for comparative purposes. So as you can see, the general fund really is very all-inclusive of the operations of the county. Yes, sir.
Jim, just one question on these two slides on the school liaison program. The draft budget on the revenue side was originally 140, and 19 budget is 249. Is that because of the increased school contracts, I assume, that we approved?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, there's another deputy in there. And also, this is a slide that I've shown more than once, and this really stratifies the total expenses by department, so that you can put in perspective where the money goes. And again, if we look at the bottom, the Sheriff's Department, which again is sheriff, operations of his office, road patrol, and operations of the jail, would comprise by far the largest department. Again, we're doing all this with the help of 628 and then some FTE employees, and this includes an additional three employees for animal control, the animal control officers. Yes, sir.
Jim, does this number FTEs include J dot employees as well?
Yes, it does.
Okay. But the budget figures for J dot are not in here, correct? Because it's a different budget altogether?
That's correct.
Okay. Would it be possible to get separation of the figures for FTEs for, well, I'd like to see just a couple of things, the number of JC dot versus...
All that's in the budget. The actual budget document, each department has a similar org chart that shows the breakdown. Like, even my office has it.
Okay. And then a year-to-year total on FTEs? I assume that's probably there, too?
Yes, there is a schedule toward the front of the budget documents that shows a schedule of all of the FTEs by department, I believe, for the last five to six years.
Very good. Thank you.
Now, if we look back to last year's budget process, we said that we had a $3 million deficit to deal with. So the solutions that were implemented for 2018, and we're addressing this here because these continue to provide the savings that are included in the 18 and 19 budget, one of the solutions we proposed and implemented was the defined benefit pension bonding, which saved money for the next few years. The other thing that we proposed was that we made changes to our health insurance plans, and also we drew down some reserves in other funds of the county. If we look at the results of the pension bonding, what this graph shows is that we have annual savings by issuing the bonds of $1.3 to $1.5 million. The savings we have will vary from year to year based upon the performance of those investments and based upon the actuarial calculations. The actual report for the last fiscal year for the pension fund is showing that for 2019, we just need to pay what's called the annual cost, which is the number toward the bottom of $960,663. But for purposes of comparison, then, I also included the debt service cost, and this shows, again, the savings relative to what would have happened had we not issued the bonds and continued to have the annual required contributions exceeding $6 million, plus or minus. With respect to our healthcare plans, our discussion last year, had we stayed with Blue Cross, they were proposing increases up to nine and a half percent. So this would have increased our total healthcare cost to an amount exceeding $9 million or approaching $10 million. With the new plans that we've adopted, what they're proposing is a 5% increase for 2019, but the total cost amount to $7.8 million in the 2019 budget. So again, we've realized some savings there with respect to the change in the plans. However, we did have some additional revenue. We have additional millages that support the operations of the animal shelter and provide for the restoration of the animal control function to the county, as well as providing capital improvements for the facilities. This will include both the facilities and the vehicles necessary for animal control. In addition, there's additional mills with respect to the parks system that help support the operations and also provide significant improvements to the capital structure of all the parks involved in the county. Again, looking at our major revenue source, which is our property tax revenues, we are proposing in the 2019 budget an increase of 1.25%, and that amounts to an additional revenue of around $300,000. And I might point out that the taxable value at this point in time is only slightly above what it was back in 2007, which is, that's just prior to the Great Recession and the reduction. And over the years, there was significant reductions to the taxable value, hence the revenue of the county. Even though we've recovered from those amounts, it begs the question, are our total expenses the same as what they were in 2007? And that's not the case. So hence, when we come to you with the annual budget, that's why we're always looking at ways to save money, and that's why we are always scrambling to keep things in balance.
If I might chime in, this would be the time for my annual tirade about how Michigan funds local government. As Jim just, and I'll reemphasize what Jim said, you know, we're operating today on revenues that were equal to our revenue in 2007. Most businesses can't do that, and we can't really either. So it's always a matter of what service are we not going to provide, you know? And that's why we come to the board, those difficult decisions, are we going to, I mean, obviously you've prioritized in the past, we've had to eliminate positions, animal control and different things, reluctance to, always to increase taxes. And I might add, Jim, you said proposed tax increase. There is no tax increase. It's just the houses, the value of the property went up, so we're going to get a little more in taxes. But with the way it works with Proposal A and the Headley Amendment all combined, it's 5%... 5% inflation, the lesser of the two. 1.25% is more or less what inflation was, that's why we're tied to that revenue. Our expenses are not tied to that law. They can go up by double digits if they so. So, you know, healthcare, we've been very fortunate and able to negotiate some advantageous deals that reduced our costs, but yet, they still go up by a whole lot more than 1.25%. And, I know, and I've said this probably, well, I've said this for seven years straight. Unfortunately, we are not alone. It's true of all municipal governments across the state. Those that are probably doing best are those that are tied to an income tax. I'm not necessarily advocating for that, but yet, at the same time, an income tax rises and falls with the income of folks, not necessarily property tax. Please continue.
And again, with respect to other categories of revenue, there is no significant increases, nor are there significant decreases. So again, we have to live within those constraints. Where does this leave us? Excuse me. Board policy requires that we have in reserves in the general fund 18% to 24% of annual expenditures. This results in a range, in other words, our reserves in the general fund could be anywhere from 8.3 million up to 11 million at the high end. Projected fund balance at the end of 2019 is 9.5, almost 9.6 million, so that puts us at 21% of reserves. So we're somewhere in the middle of our board policy.
Jim?
Yes, sir.
The SRI bond payments that we've been making, they've been coming out of this, correct?
No.
The general fund?
No, we are advancing those payments out of delinquent tax fund.
So when it's paid back, it's not going to impact this then?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, if I may?
Yes, sir.
This is where I'd like to let everybody know that while we're setting on about 20%, we need that money to be able to make the county function between now and December 1st, when the county tax bill comes out, and really make us work all the way through because we have to be able to make other agencies solvent during this period, and that reserve is what has allowed us to do it. In 2005 and '06, I'll let everyone know that while the reserve itself against the budget hasn't changed, this number has gotten down to about $800,000 at one time due to cash flow. So just to make everybody aware that this is what allows us to meet payroll and everything before the tax money comes in, and allows us to function as an organization during this time period.
And Mr. Chairman, is it not true that some municipalities that don't necessarily have this high of a balance frequently have to borrow?
Correct, you do bond anticipation-
Throughout the year to do what we do without bonding?
Yes, that's correct. Some counties, the county treasurer is required to issue these tax anticipation bonds in order to pay off the local units each year. And so the county's been fortunate enough not to have that occur. So that's really a credit to the planning that has been done.
And Jim, when they do that, in essence, the taxpayers of that county are paying interest towards that, correct?
That's right.
Thank you.
I always like to give the example of, think of your own personal checkbook at home. If you got paid once a year, and you had to manage that money for the whole year, come towards the end of the year before that next paycheck comes, you could be pretty low. All it takes is one messed-up car transmission, and you're belly up, if you will. That's why you have the reserve. It's that safety fund that every homeowner or every person really should have. It applies to business too, and at the end of the day, we are a business.
That's right. Using the private sector terms, this is really working capital, and most businesses either have to maintain that or they have to borrow it in order to operate for the year, or to buy inventory, do all the things they need to do.
Hey Jim, real quick, what is our bond rating? Do we have, do we know what our bond rating is at this time?
Yes, it's CAA2, which is investment grade. So it's not the highest, but it's still investment grade, it's very good. Looking at the other funds of the county, the largest funds would be Jackson County Health Department, the Road Department, Child Care Fund, and Front of the Court Fund. What I also have here is a chart of all of the funds for which commissioners approve a budget. So these are including a general fund here. And if we look at the largest fund really is JC.DOT's operations, and this is a little bit different format than maybe you've seen before, but it's consistent with how we show other department funds and other funds as well. And I might note here, it's kind of busy here, but if we look down at the maintenance items, third item from the bottom, you can see the increase, 2018 budget, $31 million, 2019, $25,000, almost $26 million, next year, $26 million, and that is where all of the local road activity is recorded within the road fund, if you will. And the other items really are the annual type of maintenance, the state contract that JC.DOT has, the maintenance that they do for the state of Michigan and so forth. Again, if we look at the revenue side, you can also see the state revenues in total, if you have state and federal revenues together, they are increasing over the next few years. But the most significant increase is the local share, and that's where the townships are helping with the cost of their own, that's Spring Arbor, and some of the townships are included. And that's, over the next couple of years, hopefully those projects will be completed. Oh, the other thing, I'm sorry, going back to expenditures, I might point out that the $30 million of bonds for the roads, the $14 million in other bonds that have been issued with respect to JC.DOT, we're showing the debt service cost here in the budget, which is in excess of $4 million a year. But again, the intent here is that's where we can fund the operations and moving forward, really come out with a better road system and so forth.
Jim, I just wanted to chime in and backing up to page 27 there, that's where you have the expenditures, all expenditures. While the county has a general fund expenditure of 46, over $46 million, and while that's a lot of money, and it's very complex, and it covers a lot of area, our total expenditure is what, over $138 million? So there's all those other funds that you're responsible for, that, you know, that we spend money on, that shows the full range of it. A lot of people, you know, if you think about it, and I know people don't necessarily think in terms of government as a business, but we are a business with sales of $138 million. And we have over 600 employees providing those services or running that business. You guys are the, from a business standpoint, the corporate board running a very large operation. Jim?
And along with our operations, we also have to spend some money on infrastructure, spend some money on repairs and maintenance to maintain all of the county facilities. And so, this year, our capital improvement revenue sources include the additional funds for the parks and for the animal shelter, but also include, basically, the major revenue source and funding source for capital improvements is the delinquent tax revolving fund. And so out of here, we are, and the total's not shown here, but I believe it's, let's see, about $1.8 million is coming out for improvements in the future. And also, we're showing the animal shelter and parks together of over $1.5 million. Now, some of that, that's millage dollars, but also some donations and foundation money that goes through the parks, so that's included there. And as far as transportation, I'm including, that's not road infrastructure, but that's the equipment needs of the road department. Getting into some of the major items is that under vehicles, the sheriff is purchasing seven new vehicles, and that's along the lines of each year, vehicles have to be replaced and so forth because they all wear out, and that's really hard use. We're also adding three animal control vehicles. We have two new vans for the Meals on Wheels operations, and facilities has two new vehicles involved, two new trucks and so forth. And also, the parks needs a new work truck. So when I say total seven, that's not correct, but total cost of vehicles that we're spending in 2019 is $463,000. Other major projects, the most significant one is information technology, and this includes really a lot of items where we just need the, we're really behind the curve in terms of our needs, and it really includes storage capacity, it really includes other programs that we need to upgrade, particularly with the Sheriff's Department. It includes upgrades county-wide to new software, includes upgrades with respect to document management and so forth. Other items of importance, airport terminal improvements, we've got issues with leaky roof there and some other maintenance items. We're also, out of delinquent tax, we are also paying for the debt service for the event center. In other words, that's the $4 million bond issued that we are going to use to build the event center and also to complete the improvements at the fairgrounds, the track and so forth. Also, within some minor improvements to the tower building, also there's 9/11 center upgrade, and that's really replacement of consoles and equipment. And then the parks master plan, and again, I didn't detail all of that, but that really includes playground upgrades, Lake and River Trail, restroom upgrades, Cascade Falls, and parking lot improvements. So in total, that's around 1.4. There's some additional items in there as well.
Jim, I want to comment on the IT. This is, this seven is really the first of a three-year run. It's really about probably 1.8, and most of that is frankly, software moving, a lot of storage, increase in storage capacity moving to some cloud stuff. With all the cameras and different things that are coming online, law enforcement in particular, huge demand for that, and I probably say this every year too, but I can't say it enough, I guess, is we live and die by technology. I mean, when the servers go down, court cases, jurors are sent home. I mean, everything comes to a stop. It's almost everything these days. So it's critical that we try to maintain IT. We had a test recently where we sent out a, basically an email to all of our employees that said, it was kind of one of those spam malware emails. Fortunately, we were doing it intentionally, and it was a test. There's some training needs. We had about 25% of our employees respond, click on it. All it takes is one person to click that to infect our system. So obviously, there's a reason we back up every day, and a reason we have to do that because there are malicious people out there who are always trying to find ways into our system. And of course, you know, that just emphasizes our need for training too. So we'll continue to do that. Thank you. Go ahead, Jim.
And then finally, here, any more questions I'd be happy to answer, but our next steps would be, budget is already online, the detailed schedules are there. This is the public hearing, or that's next on the agenda, and we look to approve these budgets on October 16th. In connection with this presentation, we have to at least discuss or disclose the tax levies involved with respect to the budget. And so our operating budget for the county, and that's under the blue section, is the 5.1187. Again, that's reduced, I might point out, without the Headley Amendment, we could levy 5.95 mills, but instead, we were constrained to the lower levy. And in addition to that, we have the medical care, jail, senior services, lifeways, parks, and animal control millages, again, some of which are new.
You notice in the yellow there, when he's talking about 5.95, and it shows the date of election of these individual taxes. Are the county's general operating tax that we use for general fund and operations, the majority, was last changed in November of 1970? And it continues to go, you know, down, which it's going to do as increases in property value. And frankly, I still believe at this time, my personal belief, that most people aren't really willing to just give government tax increases in the general side. You know, they would much rather have more specific tax proposal that goes to a specific item. That way, they feel more comfortable, I know I personally do as well, knowing that if I vote on that, that money can only be spent for X, whatever that purpose may be, animal control or otherwise. Go ahead, Jim.
Anyway, that concludes my presentation, and again, happy to answer questions. Yes, sir?
Not a question, Jimmy. Going to be here for another month yet, but I just wanted to thank you for your hard work on this budget and all the prior ones, probably say it again before you're gone, but thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Jim, I actually do have a question. Do we have any comparisons to what our county pays in its tax rate to surrounding counties or equivalent counties?
I don't have that, but we can obtain that. Again, that varies over the board.
Yeah, I understand that. I think that would be valuable information for the board to have. I would appreciate that. And to David's point again, yeah, thank you, even though our time goes back when I was on the county commission earlier, but it's always been in good hands, even with and through, you know, Adam Brown and continuation. So thank you.
Sarah? And you might have mentioned this already, I'm going back to the JC.DOT slide on page I don't understand the equipment line. Because there's nothing there for 2019 and only three for 2018, so did all that stuff get moved out into different things? Is it a different category for the equipment and some of the, I mean, I would assume some of the trucks and stuff are like capital maybe? I guess I don't get it.
Yes, Chris can help me on that. But there's also, there's a complicated situation, what you're going to see, equipment net for most years, there's zero there or just a few dollars. And the way that works is you have total equipment costs which are depreciated, and so then, when you depreciate it out, it nets to zero. That's one of the problems. But you are correct in the sense I don't see where the capital is specifically.
Thank you, Jim. One of the big-ticket items are the plow trucks that we approved for a three-year period, so that's there. But as Jim alluded to, Act 51 requires us to depreciate them back to zero. So in other words, we buy the stuff, it gets rented out essentially to everything, to M.DOT, to our projects, to even our own road maintenance. So all those expenses for the capital expenditures basically zero back out, so they don't necessarily show in the equipment expenditure line.
I get that, but I want to see it. You know what I mean? I get what you're saying as far as it being, but how do we, can you just put FYI, we spent $20 million in stuff? You know what I mean?
We're going to spend $5 million in stuff.
But you know what I mean? Like, okay, we bought 30 trucks or whatever.
Sure. Oh, you mean a detailed list of equipment we're producing?
Yeah, because I know, I mean, I could physically go back and look at every meeting because I think every single meeting, we bought a piece of equipment. But I want you to give me a bullet point list.
We had that. All these, every number you see in this, and it leads to basically either a spreadsheet or another document that has a whole list of numbers.
Right, but for public viewing too, I mean, they're going to know, we bought a bunch of equipment, and they, you know, have the same question as me, why don't we see anything there? You know, and I get why.
We have that.
But I think it should be attached as a FYI, you know-
Maybe a little asterisk or something?
Yes.
This is part of the challenge with fund account- This is part of the challenge with fund accounting. In fact, a lot of folks coming from the private sector, when they start looking at government accounting, and I was one of them initially many years ago, going, what the heck? You know, it takes some time to get to understand it. But just know this, for every number you see on this presentation, and frankly, for every number you see on the budget, when you'll go look at the detail of the budget, it might say, you know, capital, but there's a spreadsheet attached to that, you know, that shows what the capital, what items they're buying. And then beyond that, all those items, of course, over our, with our purchasing policy would come to the board if they're over the certain threshold dollar amount, which is over twenty, anything over twenty-five thousand would come to the board, so.
If I understand correctly, you basically want JC DOT's shopping list, the shopping list for next year, all the things we've analyzed?
You have an equipment net for twenty eighteen budget of three dollars. And we all know you bought more than three dollars worth of equipment.
It all pays for itself. No, kidding. Yeah.
That won't change, that net number won't change, will it?
But the county requires a show. But we can, we can have an asterisk with a note or something.
It does all charge back out, so the net does go to, it should be zero, so three dollars is pretty darn good, you know? Because we have to guesstimate our rates ahead of the year.
So it doesn't mean in two thousand nineteen, you won't be before agencies and affairs with any request?
That does not mean that.
That's not what it means.
No. Forevermore, we need capital, yes, to do our work.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, unfortunately, this, this is a summary format that nets a lot of things together. There's, there's other, other formats that might show more detail, plus Christopher can furnish the detail.
May I do the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Commissions like to entertain a motion to open the public hearing? We have a motion and support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, duly carried. Any public comments to the public hearing?
Peter Blimth, I have some comments about the budget. Number one, as you know, I have consistently stated that the bonds sold to cover the unfunded pension liabilities are potentially dangerous to the county in the future. Now, Jim showed you that they've worked out for this year and the next year, and that they've saved you money, approximately a million dollars a year. Is that correct, Michael? But this could easily turn the other way later on in this bonding. And should there be a problem with the American economy, it would turn the other way. And I just hope that you're, you know, paying attention to that and being aware that you have put the county citizens in a potentially delicate situation where the county's budgeting can be compromised by this act. Michael, you can respond if you like. I have one other point I'd like to make. Okay.
Public hearing, sir, you get to talk.
Okay. And then I'd like to comment on the sheriff's budget, and as you all know, I've thought for a long time that it's excessive and that what could be cut out are road patrols. You see, for next year, we're buying two hundred and some odd thousand dollars worth of new vehicles for these patrols. They're not required by state law, and if the areas of the county, the townships want this service, I believe that they should pay for it. And I think the spending on the sheriff's department is way excessive. And as you know, the spending on the jail is required. We're required to have that and do that by state law. But we're not required to have those road patrols, and we don't need them, and they are a burden on the people of the town, of the county, and they should be placed to the people who get the benefit from that and not on all of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. The presentation mentioned the fairgrounds bond and two JDOT bonds. And my question during public comment was, with this work being performed at the fairgrounds by JDOT with the asphalt, tearing up the asphalt and laying the asphalt down, first of all, I'm not sure if that's included in this one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, but my question is, and I know it doesn't, it's not coming out of public Act Fifty-One, so I'm not sure if Commissioner Elwell's reference to that was referring to my public comment. No, I understand it's not coming out of public Act Fifty-One. My question is, this work being done by JDOT at the fairgrounds, is this being paid for by one of those three bonds? Because the agenda packet stated that it was being paid for by a bond. It didn't specify which bond. Thank you.
Any commissioners like to comment under the public hearing? Commissioner Williams?
It's not a comment, but it is, it is in follow-up to John's question. Where are those dollars coming from? If you could answer that question.
Sure. First, I would say that legally, when you issue a bond for a certain purpose, you can't spend that money in other places on other things. So of course, that money that is being used on the fairgrounds is coming out of that bond for the fairgrounds. We can't use a different bond for that, so that's where that money's coming from.
Any other comments under the public hearing?
Um, I was looking back through, and this is mainly probably for Deb because she's working in it, the public defender and, oops, indigent defense budgets, and I, I'm trying to get back to it now. Are, are we confident and comfortable with those numbers going into twenty nineteen with the new indigent defense standards? For the expenditures, sorry.
Let me get back there.
Well, mainly because, you know, the prosecutor's office, there's a little over forty, you know, or fifty-some thousand, about, that it's increased. And I know that obviously with having, you know, the indigent defense standard with arraignment, people at arraignment, are we comfortable with adding to the prosecutor's offices? Is that going to be enough, basically? Do we think that's actually going to be enough?
The prosecutor did ask for staff as part of the MIDC, however, MIDC refused to fund that person. So at this time, I would believe that that person is not included in the budget. Jim can correct me if I'm wrong, but there wouldn't be a person for the prosecutor in the budget because they weren't approved through MIDC.
Right, but as an outside, as a, just one of our general departments, knowing, looking ahead, are we not planning for that? Or were we planning to have that increased cost? Because realistically, he's probably going to have to come back here, ask, rather than ask for an amendment, isn't it something we can just budget for ahead of time and say, we anticipate this coming up, we need to add in fifty more thousand dollars or something?
That's one way of doing it, but frankly, we're in a heated conversation with the state through MAC on this. Some would call it negotiations, and we wouldn't want to give away any of our position by putting in and funding a position today. Our position is that the state has passed a law that says they are going to fund this, and that they were going to hold us harmless, so to speak. And thus far, ever since the law passed, those folks responsible for implementing this law have found, seen fit to foist cost after cost on the counties, on the local government, instead of the state. So we don't want to budget anything at this point. We want to play our cards and argue with the state, and we will do what we can to keep our costs at, the money coming from the state. If such, something happens, we can always do a budget adjustment down the road, but I don't want to put anything in the budget today.
Well, oh, just to clarify, there, for two thousand nineteen, well, let's back up. The legislation required local units to set up a separate fund to account for, they call it a grant, a grant for this. And so we set up a separate fund, but the budget in there is like a placeholder that is equal to the original proposal that we submitted. And there's a little bit, not to get into complex here, but the state is on a different fiscal year, so it spans fiscal years. So, so my approach there in nineteen was to say it's a placeholder. As to what's in there, that's to be determined later, once we figure out what the state wants.
Right, and we have that placeholder, but we have, but there's a difference between adding staff to the prosecutor's office, because the state thus far has said they refused to pay for that. And we're like, oh, wait a minute, if you're going to add all this work, the prosecutor's going to need additional staff. That costs money. The state, the law says they're going to hold us harmless, they should be paying for that. So that's, the game is afoot with the state on this.
If I can just interject, the court also requested a clerk because of additional paperwork and processing that would be necessary because of the arraishments and some other changes, and that was declined as well. So, so that's to be determined.
Do we have an update with Oakland County?
The last information I had was that they were also joining.
The one we've started?
One that potentially is going forward. And they do not have an approved MIDC plan at this point, an approved plan. They're one of three funding units remaining that do not have a plan.
We're wandering from the public hearing.
And to my knowledge, they are still moving forward with their lawsuit, their first lawsuit, so.
Any other items under the public hearing? For the sake of the commission, Mr. Overton, would you please answer the question about the pension fund?
You're not, let me see here, you're not incorrect, you're correct that there is inherent risk, well, there's inherent risk in everything, but the risk is no greater than what we already had. Because we have a defined benefit plan. That means that the county government is responsible for providing a set benefit to its retirees that we promised through union contract and all that stuff. We're required to do that. If the economy does not do well, say the market were to crash, we have all of the retirement board, the retirement board has all their investments out there in that market, it's going to go down. That does not change the liability of the county. The county would still have to pay those benefits. So whether we are paying a debt service or the benefit direct, the risk is the same because they're both dependent upon the marketplace. The advantage is, through the debt service, we have a fixed debt service over a long-term period, which is much easier to manage and budget for versus an annual required contribution that can go up and down. And we believe, looking at the arc of how it's all working out through actuarial analysis and so forth, that we will save a million, a million plus for a number of years into the future. And now, when I, when I say save, really I'm talking cash flow purposes. It's not really saving because we owe the same amount regardless of whether we borrowed the money or not. It just spreads it out and makes it much more manageable for us. And us meaning all the people who live in Jackson County.
Any other commissioner comments? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing? We have a motion and support. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Duly carried. Any other items, commissioners? Hearing none, we return to the second time for public comment. Any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing none? Commissioner comments? Commissioner Leitner?
We have, here come the mummies on the sixth, so that, the Saturday. We have a little haunted barn going on beforehand, so I encourage people to buy tickets at etix.com, stop in at the fair office, buy tickets. It should be a good time.
Any other commissioner comments? Entertain a motion to adjourn? We have a motion and support. All in favor, please say aye.